I call to order the Board of Trustees Regent Meeting for June 6, 2023, and the time is 6:00 P.M. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invocation?
Mark Evans. Here, thank you for this day, thank you for this is that township, and thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country, and to thank those who have given their lives that are out there right now protecting us, and our first responder people who are protecting us also. Be with those people, be with their families, and that we will keep them in our purse. I know you.
Please point you with the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just give me a second, please.
Mark Evans.
Roll call Ms. Vera, Ms. Brown, please.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeff Johnson.
Here.
Robyn McKee.
Here.
Julie Marion.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, trustee Johnson?
No.
Mr. Evans, trustee Evans?
Yes, just quickly again, Ms. McKee is not letting go of control of the agenda creation. The administrator should be creating the agenda with the input of all trustees. Again, no input was sought, nor the agenda even shared with me until the day prior when residents saw it. Materials are also continuing to be withheld from any equal board member. This agenda continues to ignore numerous important matters facing the township and residents. I won't try to add them now because we'll be met with the usual lack of second and deny. However, I would like to move, to move the public comments to before any actions taken by the board so that we may have input before decisions are made. Doesn't this board care about what residents want from us before we make the decision? Placing it at the end tells them that we're going to do what we want, and you can complain about it afterwards. So that's my motion.
Motion died for lack of second. Roll call Mrs. Brown, please.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed.
I move to adopt the minutes from May 2, 2023, and May 16, 2023, meetings as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, trustee Johnson? Discussion, trustee Evans?
Yes, I move that these be tabled until the next meeting because there were changes made day of. We haven't had proper time to review these. I'm not sure if there's a time management issue in creating and reviewing these in a timely manner and presenting them to the board so we could thoroughly review these, but that is not being done, and also motions are still not included per Robert's rules hiding the attempted actions of another trustee. So I will move to have these tabled until the next meeting.
Died for lack of second.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to let you guys know for the record, Nita, Ms. Hanson was on vacation last week. I got the minutes out to all of the board members and plenty of time last week to read them. The only corrections that she had were also sent out in red, and it was like four or five grammar changes.
Right.
Small grammar changes, so they were in a timely manner last week to be read.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
No, they were not.
Roll call Mrs. Brown.
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. I turn the meeting over to Ms. Nita Hanson for the report. All right, Ms. Reader, thank you.
Thank you. I want to keep my remarks brief to honor the time committed to the work session on solar facilities, but I will, and I'll provide a more comprehensive report at our next meeting. But I want to respond to some issues raised at our last meeting. There were accusations about whether the park property was farmed last year, and if it was, where's the rent money? As I understand it, the property sale agreement included language that if the crops were planted by June, the existing property owners would receive the proceeds. The park property was farmed, and the rent was paid to J.W. and Snyder. There was no mismanagement nor malfeasance, as was suggested. A question was posed about the status of L.C.C.I.C. The disposition of the L.C.C.I.C. is pending with our attorney. On some other issues, Williken County engineer reports that the developer's contractor is planning mill and overlay and finish asphalt early this week on Main Street. The engineer is requiring immediate temporary striping so the road can be opened. Permanent striping will follow late next week, I mean, late this week or early next week with temporary traffic control. So, good news that Main Street's going to be opening. We've had inquiries related to property tax valuation, especially as it impacts those on fixed incomes. The township is sympathetic to those issues, but the township is not the taxing authority. The valuations are made by the county auditor. Once valuations are assessed, any property owner can request a review or modification of that new value. The trustees are seeking those interested in serving on the park committee, so if you have that interest, please let us know by either calling Town Hall or sending an email to etnatownship@etnatownship.com. For our report on our roads, I'm so proud of our road crew led by Mr. Cokely, and especially the work they did at the park and cemeteries to prepare everything for Memorial Day. No detail was left unnoticed, including replacement of the flags. Well done. Your team did a great job.
Thank you.
A light pole at Taylor Road, South Western Palmer Road, was damaged in an accident. The estimate to replace the pole from Jess Howard is $3,641. That amount will be reimbursed by the responsible party's insurance. I recommend that the trustees move to accept the Jess Howard estimate, authorize trustee McKee to sign any necessary contracts or invoices, and submit the proposed expenditure of funds for reimbursement to the responsible party's insurance.
I move to authorize Jess Howard Electric Company to a $3,641 for the light pole. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
You have discussion? Mr. Evans?
No.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I think Jeff was making sure, I don't think there's anything she needs us to sign.
Okay. I was just checking because that's what she asked.
Oh, I don't think there was anything. Yeah, we just signed.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Roll call Mrs. Brown.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
The road crew is in need of additional shirts. I provided the invoice from M&amp;H Screen Printing for $460 for the purchase of 25 shirts. I recommend that the trustees move to authorize the expenditure for the new shirts.
I move to authorize expenditure to M&amp;H Screen Printing for $420 for the safety clothing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson? Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Evans, discussion?
No.
Roll call?
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed. Thank you.
Finally, on zoning, I just want to report that 24 zoning permits were issued during the month of May for a total of $2,655. There were 15 violation letters that were mailed. Nine of those violations have been abated. The zoning commission met on May 9 and 23rd. They're working on updating the codes. The next zoning commission meeting will be June 13th. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on May 30 to hear variance requests from Southwest Looking School District for signed variances for the new primary school to be built at 8750 Watkins Road. Those variances were granted. The former Ashley Furniture Building has been purchased by another company that plans to add an additional 400,000 square feet to the building. The Core 5 Main Building has been leased by Ryder Integrated Logistics. The CRG Building at 310 and 70 has been leased by Ryder Integrated Logistics, and the Exeter Building on Globe Way has been leased. That's all I have for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson.
I do have a few questions from Ms. Hanson for things she brought up. The West Looking C.I.C., there's been no board discussion or action to put this to our outside counsel and do anything with that. So I think any, any work on that is inappropriate. We, we should be determining what's going to happen with that. I've seen, just by chance, that there's directions to wind that down after Mr. Carlisle let it go default. Now, I think that should be brought to the board, and that should be on the next agenda.
Excuse me for interrupting you. I don't believe that there's any action that is being taken or any action to present at this time to the board.
That's correct.
The, the status is that it is currently with the attorney.
There's expenditures being, being made through the attorneys outside when we have the Licken County prosecutor, so I'm very concerned about that. Then the other thing is the park committee. There's been no board action creating a park committee, discussing a park committee, or going forward with that, and things are being sent out and people are being solicited like it is. This is a board that needs to vote on these actions, and before creating a committee, the board has to create the committee, not just Ms. McKee.
That's correct. So, at the last meeting, when there was a discussion that related to the park designer, there was discussion at the meeting about the fact that a committee would be created. We are soliciting the names to bring to the board so that the board can create a committee that will work in conjunction with the designer to design a park that is the park that the community wants, and not just the park that the designer in, you know, in a vacuum would design or anything else. So, the two are not mutually exclusive of each other, but designed to work together for the good of the community.
Well, I'm for-
But no park committee is being formed without board action. We're just simply soliciting the names.
Okay, but it's being put out that Etna Township Board is creating a park committee. There's been no vote on that. What I'm saying is I'm for a park committee, but let's do this process properly, in, in open meeting and with the full board. That's all I'm saying.
If it's a matter of semantics, I can correct, I can correct the announcement to say that the board would like to consider forming a committee rather than is forming a committee.
Correct. And then just the other thing quickly on the farms. Last year, we had Ms. McKee was supposed to get bids on that. We simply asked, was it farmed? Ms. McKee refused to answer that. So that was my inquiry. Thank you.
Okay, we can move on over to new business. I move to present a certificate of commendation to Ava Wander Slevin for receiving the Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scout. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans, discussion?
Uh, no, I have not met Ava Wander Slevin, but it does look like she's achieved quite a goal, so I'm very grateful for those type of members in our community, doing, doing great work, so, congrats.
Roll call Mrs. Brown.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
I was asking if you guys signed this, do you guys-
With a black mark.
I got a red. Mr. Evans, will you make sure and sign this with really please?
Thank you. Mrs. Brown. I move to request the engineering assistant for the 2023 road paving and to authorize Jeff Johnson, trustee Johnson, to finalize the roads. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call? I mean, sorry, discussion, Mr. Brown? Mrs., Mr. Johnson? Discussion, sorry. Mr. Johnson, discussion?
Right.
On the engineer?
Yeah.
Jeff, there's, there's, there's your roads.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, this is it, right?
Yep.
So, the roads we're considering this year are Palmer Road, maintenance line, which is basically 2.4 miles, and the Parkway, which is 1.2 miles, and Heritage Drive to Globe Way, and Heritage Drive to the end of Parkway, which would be 2.7 miles.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to get this through and get estimates for that. That's pretty good gating and possibility of having some of this ready for us to the jets is very possible.
I do have a question. Two years ago, there was a motion put forward to apply for OPWC grant to pave Etna proper. That was when done on Election Day, and then Mr. Carlisle lost and then did not submit that application, but the board voted for that. Last year, I proposed to submit that also for the OPWC grant at over $200,000 to pave the roads that are in the worst condition in our township, and it looks like those are being ignored again. Is there a reason that those are not included when, two years ago, Mr. Johnson, you voted to apply for a grant to pave those?
Well, grants you have to apply for a year in advance. So, we applied for this E.W. grant this year for the roads, and we're going to do it next year, basically. Okay, so I applied for a grant this year for the roads next year. Next year, we have a bigger plan, more money, so we should go after the OPWC grant events until we get our salary, wouldn't have much more money to spend.
Okay, I'm trying to under-
I'm utilizing the money the best I can, but township still hasn't paid as much for it. Why would I do it for this one? For these right here, we could have done it, but possibly get JZ money in for these roads.
All right, but my question is, two years ago, you approved for OPWC grant, which would have paved Etna proper last year, and the payment management group indicated after they reviewed all our roads that tho- those are the worst roads we have. I just don't understand the delay for the residents in this area, why we're not addressing that. Last year, our paving budget was almost nothing because the paving was delayed until the end of the year, and we almost didn't get anything paid, and the actual paving done was miniscule, so the savings that we had from last year could certainly do it. So I would suggest that this board add the Etna proper in here to properly serve the residents in this neighborhood. At least get the engineering estimates, and then if it's too much, then okay, but why not look to see if we can, we can do that? It would have been better to have the OPWC grant pay for it, or majority of it, but we, one of our primary duties is to provide roads for the residents, and I think if we exclude Etna Parkway, we're doing them a disservice.
We're honestly, Etna Parkway?
No, not Etna proper.
Etna proper, okay. Etna proper, the parts that you were talking about, most of alleyways. Most of them use them as driveways. Pike Street's the main road through there. We paid some of that because it was bad. You were correct, that was a good road to need to pave. We did that one. There's no sense in applying for an OPWC grant when all we were doing is paving a few alleyways throughout that thing. It's not that much money. The money we're going to spend next year is significantly more, which we'll get a bigger grant for that.
But they're deteriorating now.
They're not, they're not in that much shape. They don't get any traffic, aren't they, all? That's your opinion? I've looked at them. I've said, I don't think they need anything.
Well, like I said, two years ago, you voted to pave them with the OPWC grant. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, two years ago. So like-
And it hasn't been done?
And we did Pike Street.
Roll call Mrs. Brown.
Trustee Evans.
Yes. It's something done.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. I move to approve the, excuse me, the June 30th, 2023 Community Movie and Music Night event, not to exceed $2,500 to authorize myself, trustee McKee, to sign the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson? Trustee Johnson? Trustee Evans, discussion?
Yes, I'm glad we're finally moving forward with some of the events that I brought forward last year. One thing I would add that there's been attempts to add like a food truck Friday, and I, I think if we can incorporate something like that, allow people to get some food, watch a movie, I think it'd make a great experience, but also support some of the local business, give a little bit more variety and some of the options to eat around here. So I think we should combine that with that. And then as far as Ms. McKee signing everything, we have an administrator we hired to administer the township. I believe it's, it should be her duty because she is in charge of all departments and personnel to do this, so why don't we have Ms. Hanson deal with this?
As far as the movie night and music night, we do have food trucks. It will be a part of the event.
I thought Mr. Singleton said that there, that ended where we can have food trucks over at the park within the residential area, and we would have to make a change to that.
No, this, no, this is a special event. So it's a one, it's a special event, so it's not a permanent, where they would get their license to come anytime they wanted to. This is a special event. Roll call? Mrs. Brown.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. I move to approve the Dynamic Networks Managed Service Agreement upon approval as, to form by Prosecutor's Office, to authorize myself, trustee McKee, to sign, and to authorize a monthly bill of $259 covering email, archiving, backup, and security in the Office 365. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, trustee Johnson? Discussion, trustee Evans?
Yes, again, this contract information has not been provided me until I sat down at this podium. That is improper, and especially you're saying it's reviewed by the prosecutor. The prosecutor indicated anything going to that office should be copied to all three trustees, and it's not being done by Ms. McKee. Again, I've not had an opportunity to review this whatsoever, so I think it should be tabled until the next meeting. And if these items would be provided to the full board, especially me as trustee, prior to the meeting, that would be an issue. But again, you're asking me to vote on something I haven't had a chance to review.
Roll call?
Trustee Evans.
No.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee McKee.
Yes.
Passed.
I move to authorize Nita Hanson, our administrator, to apply for the O.E.V. charging and fueling station grant program. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Trustee Johnson?
Where, where we, we're talking about putting this where? Location that we were going to apply for a grant, or we think we want it? Is that part of the grant? Do you have to say we're going to, or?
Well-
I mean, it's going to be on our property, we've got, what else is?
It would be on our property here at the park, right across the road there. It has to be within a mile, excuse me, of the highway, which we would qualify for that. There is some additional, I'm just bringing it for a discussion, not saying that we're going to vote on it. But there is an additional information that we did find out late afterward, so we just wanted to bring, make sure we brought it to the board, that there is an opportunity for a grant.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, but the reason that we, that I sought to have this added to the agenda was because the timing to apply for the grant expires on June 13th. We got the email on May 31st about it. I, since I've been back yesterday and today, I've been doing research on the grant itself, and while I think we would, could technically meet some of the requirements, I'm concerned about being able to meet all of the requirements. So I actually suggest that we maybe even table this issue and not put it to vote.
Okay. My que- my question would be, is if we, if we applied for it, do we have to accept it, or does it hurt us if we don't accept it?
Well, I think my, my bigger concern was not so much whether we would be forced to accept it, which I don't think that is the case, that we would be forced to. My concern is that in the research that I've done, the contribution from the township would be a substantial one, based on the benefit that we might receive for that. So, based on that, and we have such a quick timetable, it would be my suggestion that we table this particular program and maybe look for others that we might be able to apply to the same type of an E.V.'s fueling station that is not this targeted grant.
And is, I would almost suggest any possibility of any charging station near Alows or the Sheets, so, because charging does take time, it gives an opportunity to go to a restroom or that, have an air park, I don't know if that'd really be useful to travelers. So, I'd be, I motioned to table this.
I'll second. Table.
So I'll vote yes to table?
Yeah. Roll call?
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Table.
Okay, we'll move over into the fiscal officer report. Ms. Marion is not here tonight. I'll move to Resolution 23060601 to approve the purchase order, orders as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans, discussion?
Yeah, I don't see a copy of the resolution or purchase orders in our fashion.
She said she emailed it.
She emailed it out.
Yeah.
So it's the ones that were emailed? Okay, typically they're printed and presented, because there could be changes.
Julie's calling, can you guys look?
So, okay.
Did she get your email?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But typically there's changes or removals.
Okay, thank you. Roll call Mrs. Brown, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. I move to ratify the payment for the bills as shown as, on the payment listing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Johnson?
None.
Mr. Evans?
Uh, yeah, again, we don't have them here. I would just suggest that they always be present when we're voting on them. That's it.
Yes, okay. Roll call?
Ms. Marion brought up earlier today. I'm definitely out with this.
Roll call?
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee McKee?
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move over into work session regarding solar farms. I'm going to turn the meeting over to trustee Evans.
All right.
It's 6:27.
6:27.
And good timing.
Thank you.
Uh, well, I said this has been a long time coming. I'm glad we're finally having this work session. We do have several speakers. I just want to briefly announce some, myself, trustee. Given the presentation, we have Ohio Representative Kevin Miller from District 69 here, which he's going to speak about the bill. We have resident Judy Caffmeyer, who brought this to the board's attention, and we also have Janine Baldridge, who's going to be speaking regarding the effects of solar on Hartford Township. Those that couldn't attend, but wanted to, and provided materials, was Ohio Senator Tim Schaper, District 20. He provided legislative description, analysis, and summary. He said if we needed him to come in, he, he could do another time. James Leonard, president of Neighborhood Strategies, who's working on our comprehensive plan right now. He had a prior engagement, but provided a, an opinion letter. And Catherine Hope Cunningham, who emailed the township, she's a solar consultant, and provided some information on, on jobs and E.V. voltages. So with that, like I said, we're here-
May I, if you could just one moment, I apologize. Kristi Hoppen is here from Licken County Solar Power, and she has a presentation about the story of the process, and so I didn't know if it would make sense for maybe Kristi to give her presentation about the process for the solar farms first, because it's probably applicable to the number of the-
Well, I don't think we're talking about the process so much as the applicability of the township, but how, how long is your presentation, Kristi?
I could, like, five to 10 minutes.
I, I would like to maybe have Kevin Miller speak first on the bill, talk about, and then go forward, because I don't, he's made time in his schedule, and I'm glad he could make it, so-
Thank you, sir.
I would like to introduce Kevin Miller, our representative from District 69, if you'd like to come up here. you'd like to come up here.
And I also have some extra handouts. If anybody didn't receive a handout, it needs one, I have some extras. Does anybody need one? If you raise your hand, I'll make sure that you get it. No? Okay, good.
I know they don't make them for tall people.
Well, good evening to everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to come and address the board here. Ironically enough, Senate Bill 52 was actually one of the first votes I cast. I got sworn in and voted on the budget, and then about an hour later, I had to vote on this bill. And as we all know, solar and wind can be controversial. So what I had to do was determine very quickly what exactly this bill did and where I would be on this. So essentially, what Senate Bill 52 does, it deals with solar and wind. And what it does is it takes the power essentially from the Power Siting Board in Columbus, and it moves it locally. It allows, at the county level, folks to weigh in on this. So for me, that was very beneficial, and that's why I get a yes vote for this process. And to get into the specifics in this, what it does is allows a couple different things. It allows to, it allows to restrict certain areas or exclusionary zones, if you will, in the county. And then it also allows the commissioners, as opposed to the Power Siting Board, or if they get an opportunity to say basically yes or no to one of these facilities that is coming into the county. They can, they can modify it, or they can say no to it, or they can allow it to move forward to the Power Siting Board. So the Power Siting Board still weighs in on this. But essentially, locally, they get the first crack, if you will, at it. So essentially, what, what they're going to do, if you were going to do an exclusionary zone or restricted zone, what the commissioners would do is they would adopt a resolution that would, basically, it identifies the area, the boundaries, provides a map, and then it is actually filed with the Attorney's Office, if they're going, if they're going to do that. Now, there's another way that you can do this as well. And this was put into the bill in the instant that maybe the commissioners weren't necessarily doing what maybe the will of the people was. So there's a referendum process as well in this board. So it wouldn't necessarily have to go through the commissioners. It can be brought forth by the voters as well. And that would, that would require eight percent of all voters in the election from the previous government. And with that number, that would then take the petition, and it would put it on the ballot, and then folks would be able to vote for it. So long and short of it is, Senate Bill 52 brought these decisions from, from up at the state level down to the local level to make those determinations. So I know that's kind of the Reader's Digest version. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this time, if anybody has any, or the board, or if you want to wait till the end.
I mean, if we have any quick questions for Kevin Miller.
Are you talking about the county level or township level?
It, it is actually, it's written to the county level. My understanding is there obviously would be conversations between the commissioners and the trustees.
And we've talked to the commissioners prior, and they asked that it be initiated at the township level and brought to them. And I've got another letter I'll address later, we received from them too. So, but no, that was a great, great introduction. Does anybody else on the board, or Nita?
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Representative Miller. Well, I think now, since we've got that process, if Kristi, do you want to go a little bit about the process? Of what happens when they implement solar? And then we'll, Judy?
Move it down to short people, love it. So I provided you a copy of a presentation that I had done to a couple different groups at the state level about solar in Ohio as a whole, and specifically how Soil and Water looks at the process and the projects. So the first couple slides are, there's three different types of solar. There are personal solar and business solar, that you would see on somebody's house, those types of things. You've got community solar, which I see on the bottom of your information sheet here, about the less than 50 megawatts of power solar fields. That is something that is being addressed at the state level, I believe, in the last General Assembly. It was House Bill 450, I think it's 196 this year. But as of now, that community solar development is managed through the township, through township zoning, and it is not managed through the Ohio Power Siting Board. That brings some additional responsibilities for the township to, for the construction of, and all the things that go along with a solar development. So kudos to you for putting that on your list and make sure you have a conversation about that. What we're, what you seem to be talking about right now is the over 50 megawatts power of solar developments, and that is considered a commercial solar development. Anything over 50 megawatts of power that would be put into a transmission line would be run through the Ohio Power Siting Board process. The House Bill 52 that Kevin Miller had discussed is the first step in the process as of now, and that does give some local control to county and township governments. But you'll see in the middle of, the middle slide on page three on the handout, that whole convoluted little boxes of things, that is the flow chart on how the Ohio Power Siting Board goes through the process. When a development has been proposed, what you see on the corner of the table there where Nita's sitting at, is one of three binders that size is one application. It's a very complicated process. It has gone through all these steps where there is public hearings, there are opportunities for intervenors, which would be local government and so forth. But as you can see on the bottom slide of that page, that's what I felt like after the first time I went through the process. It was like drinking water from a fire hose. So things to take into consideration at the local government entity side, or, I'm sorry, page four, it has the two commercial solar development maps that have been approved in Licking County so far. There's Union Ridge Solar that will be operated by Leeward Energy, that is an owner-operator-developer. So it's a little bit different types of conversations with those types of groups that are the developer and owner. And the Harvey Solar in Hartford Township, that is a 2,800 acre, at least it started out at 2,800 acres. I think it's decreased a little bit in size. But you can see that it's not congruent, so there is a lot more complications in that one. That is a 350-megawatt power site, and it is going to, it's developed by Open Roads, Open Roads Renewables, but it will be sold to an owner-operator. So it's a different kind of conversation when you're going through the application process and the negotiations with others. There's an opportunity for the neighbors to work through the companies to create good neighbor agreements. So for example, here closer to home at the Union Ridge Solar, there is a subdivision that was going to be impacted by the panels being in the backyard. They negotiated farther setbacks, as well as a mound with large landscaping on it to block the view. And they went from having rotating panels to fixed panels to help with the glare issues, because there is a glare study that is being done through that process as well. So there's lots of ways to get involved. The way Soil and Water has approached this is that it is a land use change. Soil and Water, our board and our organization did not take a stance on whether it was good or bad. We are neutral on whether it comes into the county. It is a matter of, that is a land use change that needs to be managed. So we had conversations with a lot of different people, the operators, of course, the landowners and the partners who were going to be working in the area. And the, how we were able to impact the process is, as part of the flow chart, the little boxes, squiggly lines, we became an intervener. So therefore, we had a say in what was going to happen with the application through. This is a judicial process, so it was a joint agreement through that judicial process that we were able to make comments. One of the, the big, I think, issues that, you know, people will say that, you know, not in my backyard, or what ifs and so forth, there is a process that does do it justice as far as making it safe and making it right. It's not for everyone, and I, you know, it's not for Etna Township, it's not. But you also have to take into consideration, I don't know how many farmers might be in here, but the ones that we've talked to across the state of Ohio who have entered into agreements to lease to solar developments, is that it is a landowner's right. And so therefore, when you're talking about, you know, what the township wants, I hope that you listen to both sides of the story. There is a solar development that is been proposed for just south of the Licking County border in Fairfield County. It is about 900 acres, and it butts up against Etna Township. I'm not sure if you are familiar with that. Be happy to get you some more information. And before I came out this evening, I did send the township trustees an email that I sent to the other townships that had solar developments coming in with a video from Morpsy when solar developments first got really accelerated in applications. They did a wonderful job with the Ohio Power Siting Board, Matt Butler, and Ohio Farm Bureau, Dale Arnold, that goes through the entire process from the PMG, the Pennsylvania, Maryland, Jersey Federal Transmission Line process, clear down to the Ohio Power Siting Board approval process. So I hope you take the time to learn, to watch that hour and a half video.
All right, watch it.
That is great information. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, as we go through the evening, if there's other things that come up.
Thank you.
The only thing I would ask is if you could send any, anything on the abutting solar development in Fairfield, if you'd just send me a copy of information on that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And a quick update on the Union Ridge Solar, it has been approved. They intend on starting construction in January 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question over here?
Yes.
Has there been any studies about the unintended consequences and the waste when these things wind up? I mean, I know they're being developed and sold to investors, but after 30 or 40 years, you have all that, those toxic panels. There's already problems disposing of these panels, they have a lot of toxic chemicals. Europe itself is just littered with electric car batteries, where people are just abandoning the cars, pulling the plates, because they can't afford a $5,000, $8,000 battery, and they just walk. So there's a lot of unintended consequences in this. It sounds good, go green, and, you know, blah, 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 it's correctly directed everything, but there are some residual things here.
I would agree that there are some issues in various areas of the world with this. If I have had the opportunity to take a tour of First Solar in Perrysburg, Ohio, by Toledo, where the panels are made from the beginning to the end, the, the panels themselves, from First Solar, are 80% recyclable. So there, it depends on where the panels are ordered from, and the EPA has assured us that they run the tests on all of the panels to make sure that they are suitable for the environment. But I don't have any experience in the disposal of or the breakage of, and I'm sure that there's plenty of information on the internet for pros and cons of all of it. I do know that the...
The EPA?
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to say the EPA's one, the leasehold risk in the Colorado River, too, that's not really a trusted...
Well, I think we're getting a little off topic here.
Yeah, yeah. There is a...
Let's go address some of that.
Part of the application, there is a decommissioning bond that is set through the Ohio Power Siting Board for at the end of the life of the process.
And we'll be discussing that.
I just want to know, just Joe, Joe resident, okay, any Joe resident, what, what does this mean for the typical resident of Ohio? What does this mean for our community? What, spell out the benefits that this would bring to the community.
Well, we're going, we're going to be addressing that. She's from Soil and Water, and that's the impact.
Okay, I thought it was relevant. I'm sorry, I thought it was relevant.
It is a relevant question, I'm just not able to answer.
This is kind of over everybody's head.
Right, we're going to be dealing, dealing with this, but she's from Soil and Water, dealing with the soil.
That's all, Mark, that's all Charlie did.
Yeah, we, we review...
It's okay, thank you, I'm sorry, that's the wrong question.
Section of the application, I just don't have an answer for you on that.
I have a question for you, that's the wrong question.
So, so how does this impact water runoff and different things with that? How, I mean, because you're with water and soil, so how would that, how would these solar farms, how do they impact that? How will that work? I mean, because you're obviously here for a good reason, I'd rather hear what your take is on the, on the water and soil, or the water and soil part of it.
Thank you, Trustee Johnson. The part of the process during the construction, before the construction starts, they have to have construction plans reviewed, similar to what we do with all of the commercial construction here. And they have to have a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWEP, that has to be approved. Then during the construction process, Soil and Water is going to be the inspectors to make sure that they're installing all the stormwater regulations to standard. So it, it is managed similar to a commercial construction site as far as stormwater goes.
So in a normal way, they would disrequire ponding of some sorts, or catch basins, or something like, like caddie titcher ponds, I'm saying, I guess?
It depends on the landscape and if there's any water waste for them to discharge into, but yes, it is...
But these, these solar farms don't create any hazardous waste off of them from runoff, do they?
I, I can't answer that question. As far as from runoff, no, because if, as long as the panels are intact, there is no contamination there.
Just one more, kind of in the line of this gentleman, has there been any discussion that you're familiar with of anybody in a five-state area, maybe, is thinking about recycling panels as a place that they could take them for recycling? Have they thought about that at all? Is there anything in the works?
First Solar, when I was there in November of 2021, they were building a 1.5 million square foot building for, strictly for recycling the plant, the panels. So it, there is, there is a recycling, a panel recycling plant in Toledo, Ohio.
Do we know if there's, if they store, because I don't know, do they store batteries? Are the batteries onsite for storage, or do they just only feed into the grid, and then at night, there's none?
There, there are two different ways that they can create that plan, and they can use batteries. Most of them, most of the developers will look for locations to put their fields within a three to five mile radius of a major transmission substation, so they can tie in directly, because it saves all the cost of having batteries.
So that means they don't need batteries if they do that?
If they tie directly in, they do not need batteries.
All right, so I guess my, my follow-up question to that is, how many places are there in Etna Township where that is viable?
I can't answer that question. I don't know where this is.
And as far as the different types, Adam, in that video that she provided, the link, it was from 2021 before, that's the 52 in that, I think, back in February. But they do discuss the different types of storing it onsite with battery and that. So I'll, I'll publish the, that link, and it'd be good to watch it. What you can do, remember, you can always increase the speed, it's an hour and a half video, so you can do it at 150% and get through it quicker, but still get everything, so...
And there are also battery-only stations. There's a place called Flint Grid on Jug Street in New Albany area that is a 200-megawatt battery-only location. They have pretty much 15 semi-truck-sized pieces that are the batteries that they're installing.
So that brings in another question about the environment, because those batteries can be pretty toxic, getting themselves on those. So something we should consider.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Hoppen.
Thank you for letting me jump in here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next, I'd like to... Uh, next, I'd like to introduce Judy Kepfleier. Again, Etna resident, she was the one that's spearheaded this for the township. Has been asking for the last year for us to deal with this, so welcome, Judy.
Okay, well, I've been doing, I've done a lot of reading, a lot of research on this. And so what I put together is simply a twelve-point fact sheet and that I will distribute. I only have twelve copies.
I've got one already.
And that's big print. So this concerns exclusionary zones is strictly about anything above fifty megawatts. So as I go through this, I'm just gonna read the points because it's a compilation of all of the articles and different things that I've read over the last year and a half. So Senate Bill 52 passed in 2021 seeks to install reasonable local control over the development of wind and solar projects that produce greater than fifty megawatts of power. Prior to that, all solar and wind projects fell under the jurisdiction of the Ohio Power Siding Board and had been exempted from all local laws and regulations. And that's exactly what Representative Miller referred to. Senate Bill 52 gave county commissioners and township trustees jurisdiction over their districts, and twelve counties in Ohio have passed resolutions that allow for exclusionary zones in their areas. A commissioner sanctioned exclusionary zone, it has to go, it starts in the, at the local level and then has to be approved at another level, and I was glad to hear about the referendum thing this evening as well. Commissioner sanctioned exclusionary zone does not mean that all townships must comply with the resolution. Townships within the county decide what best suits the needs and future development of that community. And doesn't that sound exactly what we are, are asking for? We just want local jurisdiction. And citing a graph from the Ohio Power Siding Board, and so I'm an equal opportunity researcher in Ohio, nearly fifty solar and wind projects are in various stages of development, pre-application, preening, pre-construction, under-construction, and operational. This accounts for sixty-nine thousand three hundred eighty-three acres, capable of producing six thousand seven hundred sixty-eight megawatts of power, according to the OPSB information. To me, that means that one thousand acres of Ohio's cleared flat, open to sunshine farmland is needed to produce ten megawatts of power. And then number five, according to the SEIA, that is the Solar Energy Industries Association, Ohio is actually number forty-sixth when comparing the performance of solar energy systems in our state to the rest of the country. That data certainly suggests that there are forty-five other states that are more favorable than Ohio when it comes to solar operations, except that Ohio's flat farmland is considerably more affordable than that in other parts of the country. Tech, number six, tech companies partner with solar developers to elevate their ESG, economic, social, and government scores, and sign power purchasing agreements to allow those companies to purchase all of the power produced by a solar farm for fifteen to twenty years at a fixed rate. Considering that our electric bills are, went up by thirty percent as of June first, we don't get that kind of a deal. And those are going up again next June. Solar companies promise that the land, once used to produce food, will be restored to its original function once the lease expires. Money to complete these restoration projects are supposed to be set aside, as we were told, in a bond, aside for the reclamation. But since this hasn't happened yet, that remains to be seen. I might add, ceyndra. Companies go out and go bankrupt and leave people high and dry all the time. More questions arise as to the solvency of the solar companies in thirty to forty years. Number eight, when the construction of a solar project is complete, less than six persons are expected to maintain it. Lots of construction site workers initially, but it goes down to a minimal number of people actually onsite and taking care of it. Number nine, the federal and state tax incentives that have been offered for solar production on homes and industrial construction are being phased out, going from twenty, uh, twenty-eight percent advantage to zero very shortly. Number ten, Ohio has attracted the attention of some very big investors for solar development. Bill Gates owns nearly nine thousand acres of Ohio farmland, and four thousand of those acres are designated to be included in one of the largest solar projects in the U.S. This facility is being built in Madison County. And Amazon is currently involved, involved in sixteen solar development projects. Number eleven, decommissioning solar panels raises a big question. Will these panels be recycled or create a huge environmental landfill issue once the leases expire? Currently, the amount of expertise required for reclamation does not justify the recycled return. Costs on today's prices, from what I researched, twenty to thirty dollars to reclaim compared to one to two dollars to dump them in a landfill. And then finally, Ohio citizens are questioning the value of large solar and wind farms in their communities, and that's with me as well.
All right, thank you, Judy, for the information. Then I'd like to bring up Janine Baldridge to discuss her experience with solar.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees, for even deciding to do this. It's really important, super important.
Will you adjust the microphone a little bit?
Oh, perfect, thank you. All our people.
We want to be able to hear you.
Okay, so my name is Janine Baldridge. I'm from Hartford Township, it's up in the west, very northwest corner of the county. And our township is a little bit bigger than yours by maybe four acres, but you are very much more developing us. We are farms, homes, and one big egg farm. So if you Google, look at us on Google, we're just barfield, same homes, mostly. So much room for development out there. I am the Secretary of the Hartford Township Comprehensive Planning Committee. We're currently trying to update our comprehensive plan, and we are trying to set exclusionary zones for community solar as well as industrial solar and wind. I'm also the Secretary of a little grassroots organization formed by me, a housewife, my friend and nurse, and another friend, a church administrator, who did not move out here to fight City Hall. But that's where we are. So we're a little, little organization that has been fighting that solar project that Christie mentioned, Harvey Solar, for three years now, well, four years. And right, that part was approved, and right now, we're getting ready to go to Ohio's Supreme Court to fight it, you know, our last duty to stop. The majority of, of people in our township are very much against that project. Okay, so as you may expect, I am against industrial solar on prime farmland especially. And I am also for exclusionary zones, obviously. I think that I would encourage you guys to seriously consider excluding not only industrial solar, but also community solar on your, in your township. I have a lot of reasons for that I'd love to discuss with you guys, especially talking about community solar, when I have more time, maybe after the meeting. I have learned a lot. In the three and a half years we've been fighting this project, I've learned a lot about solar. I've learned a lot about the OPSB process of approving or denying these projects. I've learned a lot about the developers and a lot about the cause and effect of this process, mostly negative, on our community. I would love to answer anybody's questions afterwards. I will stay for as long as it takes to answer all your questions about the process and whatever else you need. But I'll give you just a few reasons why I believe that in putting solar panels in an industrial array on prime farmland is not the worst thing you could do with a solar panel. I will tell you also that Christie quoted twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight hundred acres for our project. We were told that by the developer for three and a half years, but when they had to testify under oath at the evidentiary hearing, it was four thousand acres, which we knew already because they don't count the underground conduit that they have to run through the entire township to connect those panels to the substation. They will dig up all through the township. When you look at that and fields that they've secured, that we don't know what they're gonna use them for, that they say there won't be panels, it's four thousand acres. So that's a lot more than twenty-eight hundred. Not that Christie probably would have known that, but they did. The developer did. Okay, just a few reasons. When they come in to build these projects, the very first thing they do is take that beautiful topsoil that farmers have worked on, sweat into and bled into for over a hundred years, and rip it off the land. They scout the land down, take all that topsoil off, it's no longer a prime farmland field when they do that, because that's how you get prime farmland, is you work it for generations and you nurture it for generations. They will take all that topsoil off. We don't know where it goes, but it comes off. They want the flattest possible land. Then they drive piling six feet down into the ground, they will break farm tiles, you will have issues with drainage. Any farmer in the room, I don't have to go into any more detail, if they're breaking your farm tiles, you've got a problem, your neighbor's got a problem, there will be water issues. They don't deny that, they just say they'll cap it at the main. They'll, yeah, it's, it's a little ridiculous. Okay. They, these panels are toxic. They have cadmium telluride in them, it is classified as a toxic compound, it's a forever chemical compound, it does not go away. And lead, which I don't have to say anything about, everybody knows that's dangerous. We have two studies on our website, safehartfordtownship.com, that are from Germany that detail the studies that they did with rainwater to show that when the panels become cracked, which they do just from hot and cold, hot and cold, sitting on the land, when the frames get loosened a little bit from rainwater and changing in temperatures, these, these chemicals with pH of rainwater become unstable, and they do leach out of the panels into the ground, into the water. They don't say how much, at what levels, is it dangerous, is it not dangerous? But when you have organizations tell me that that doesn't happen, and you know that it does, it's a little concerning, it's hard to trust them. These, these huge industrial panel projects use a lot of water. They have to be washed to stay a little bit efficient, and so they use a lot of water. They tie up the land for thirty to forty years for these leases that are on there. In, in Etna's case, your land is very precious over here, you don't have a whole lot of it for development at this point, from what I can see on the maps. I would, I would, you obviously want to be careful what you do with the land that you do have. As your farmers retire, if they don't lease to other farmers to farm, and you're stuck with, you know, and you, and you have that land, and you need to develop it, you got panels sitting there just taking up the land. It doesn't seem like a life's choice. The projects, I had, the last thing I will say, I could say so much, but the last thing let's say is that they ruin community. I didn't move out to Hartford, that lovely place of peace, to have envy with my neighbors, to stand up against the property rights of farmers who I loved and respect, but that is where we are, and it's unfortunate. This is a story as old as time. Companies have been coming in to farmers since forever ago, telling you they got a great deal for you, they want your land. This is no good, in my eyes. And it does cause a lot of strife in your community, and I, I just don't think it's worth it for that. Okay, so the last things I will say, as you asked questions and as Christie gave her presentation, the SB 52 allows one commissioner, county commissioner, and one trustee from that township where the project would be, to sit on the board. In our case, that would have done us no good, as two of our three trustees were leasing the project, and the commissioners were all for it. So that wouldn't help us. It will help other communities, I would hope. But the developers come in and they go to the trustees first, they probably go to the commissioners first, but they go to the trustees before they come to anyone else. And a lot of trustees are farmers in these townships, so they sign them up for the project. They told us there would be no batteries, somebody asked about batteries, they told us forever, there will be no batteries on the fields, there will be no batteries in the fields. They were right. We found out after the project was approved, the battery facility has been approved by the PJM to be put on our substation. So the battery facility will be there, it just won't be in the fields. So a little bit of dull speech. But they subjected us to a lot. And the last thing, the EPA toxicity test, I already talked to you about that, they are classified, the panels are classified as toxic. They run a test with not, with tap water, not with rainwater. The ones that have holes in them, or huge cracks, or lots of damage, those are not allowed to be put in a landfill. The ones that they think are, they run tap water through and they don't get toxic chemicals, they say those are okay, a lot of those get shipped off to India to be put in their, their landfills. That's the cheapest way to deal with it. So anyway, that's all I had about that, and I'm happy to answer any questions afterward.
Does the board have any questions?
Would you repeat your website address?
Absolutely, safehartford township. It's TWP for township. Dot com.
And Hartford is spelled out, safehartfordtpp.com?
TWP.com, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
And any from the audience, she's agreed to stay afterwards.
Yeah, I'll be there. Anybody have questions now?
I have a question. You said that most of you are against the solar panel, why, supposedly there's a referendum thing in the House Bill 52, why haven't you done that?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that. We were grandfathered out, the S B 52, it didn't affect us, it didn't help us at all as were all of the projects that were on the, set up at the time. Yeah, so it didn't help us.
Appreciate the.
Adam, if you go to the Ohio Siding Board, they'll show you a whole list, and they'll show the ones that are grandfathered, fathered, and ones that aren't.
I didn't know there was some that were and some weren't, so it's good to know.
Yeah.
What, what is your responsibility in your area for the solar panels? What's your experience or?
Well, they're not up yet. It's up to me, like, how do I?
Are you just a resident in that area?
Yes, yes, they'll be right in my backyard, they'll be on two sides. If they put them in, they'll be, they'll surround you on two sides.
Any township trustees or committees?
I'm on the Comprehensive Planning Committee now, yeah, after the project was approved, yeah.
What are the pros? You told us a lot about the cons, and I respect that, I do, I understand and appreciate your point of view and everything, but what are the pros that they sold you on then? What are the pros that are being sold on? I just want to know if those pros are money.
Yeah, thank you. I think there are probably many, there's, it's money. You know, if you're an elderly farmer and you don't have kids to farm your land and you're trying to figure out how to retire, it's an attractive offer to diversify the use of your land and get a little money for essentially doing not much. And I, I can respect that. I think the farmers will not get as good a deal as, as they hope. I'm worried for them as well.
But what are the pros for the community? Catch it to the farmer?
Um, they tout that there will be a lot of money that they'll give to, for instance, they're giving one point three million to our, our school a year for the forty years, but it never increases, it only depreciates. So housing taxes would go up if they built houses there, for the panels, there is no, it just stays that same amount. So in ten years, I don't know what that's gonna be worth, but not what it's worth now.
So are there pros as far as the energy aspect of it? Like, when your energy costs go down, how will it affect your energy?
I wish, I wish it did. I, I really do wish it helped us.
Is your energy just gonna go up then?
Well, there's some theories about that, there's a lot of opinions in Europe about that, they're dealing with certainly higher costs. I can't say if that'll have. I can't say that'll have happened to us. I can tell you that in the application for the project, it said that the panels will only ever operate at 25% and that is, and that they will not operate, they will not produce megawattage during heavy cloud events and snow events. So Ohio.
50%.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Brandon. So why did they choose your place?
Oh, it's the perfect place. We have elderly farmers who have worked there for their whole lives and a lot of their kids aren't taking over the farm and we have beautiful land, beautiful prime farmland. Yeah, it's flat, it's cheap to work it. Yeah, it's a great place to pick, but I think it's predatory.
If I could respond to the taxes and the pros and what you're referring to with the 1.3 million to the schools. That is through the payment in lieu of taxes program called a pilot. And any taxing agency such as the schools, the fire department, the township roads, all of them would get a part of the $7,000 per megawatt. So taxes would increase and there would be additional money brought into the township and the county.
And to put that in perspective, sorry. To put that in perspective, we've got two properties, the Sheets and Langill property, that there was a tip given and 75% of those taxes are being, you know, paid but then returned to the township and developer. Over 10 years, there's 3.2 million that would have gone to the schools that aren't. So while jurisdictions may get 1.3 million, other uses may actually generate a lot more for schools and other localities. So, I mean, 1.3, when you hear it, it sounds like a lot, but it might not be. So it's just about the different uses of that.
Does it go up in the 40 years?
We were told by the president of the developer's company that it would never go up. It's going to stay that amount that it is today for 40 years.
And I think that just depends on how it's negotiated. It's like our NCA, it was nine cents per square foot. That's never going up. So in 20 years, that nine cents isn't going to be worth anything. Where typically places both do millage, so as that property increases, that amount actually increases. So there's different ways to do it, right and wrong. So that would be one thing with any development that you would have to look at.
Yeah, it's complicated. Taxes are complicated.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Bolrich, for your comments.
Thank you.
And like I said, she said she'd be staying afterwards, so if anybody has other comments on that. And then I'd just like to, Kevin gave a great summary of, you know, why we're here. And as again, Senator Shaffer sent the bill summary and, you know, to really stress the reason for SB 52 is putting the control locally because it was being ignored. The higher up you go, they don't listen to you here, just like with schools, you know, the best policies and that are dealt at the local level rather than federal on that. And I do have a copy of that for anybody that wants. Then also, if you go to the Ohio Siting Board, they do have maps showing all the current proposed and approved solar sites throughout the state. So it's a good resource there. I did reach out to a solar developer in Harden and did not get a response from them. But I did find, through the American Planning Association, I actually joined there and paid for this memo they created. It's a couple of years old, but it deals with planning for utility and solar energy facilities. Everybody should have a copy of this. And just, I'm not going to read through this because everybody can kind of go through it on their own, but as they say, unlike many land uses, these solar installations will occupy vast tracts of land. They're usually very large and require a lot of resources and it could really have an impact on the community, the location, the field, buffers and all that. And there's also a need for decommissionment that's pointed out. So localities must consider the other elements of sustainability, make deliberate decisions regarding impacts and benefits to the social fabric, natural environment, and local economy. How should a locality properly evaluate the overall impacts of the large scale clean energy land use of the community? And that's the question we're here for. While public officials tend to focus on the economics of the facilities and what money could be brought in and the overall fiscal impact to the community, the emphasis for planners and the community in this board is on the direct land use considerations that should be carefully evaluated, zoning, neighbors, view sheds, and environmental impacts and best uses. I won't go through the solar backdrop. I mean, solar is increasing. Anytime you have subsidies, more industries go towards that, so that's what we're seeing right now. Before this SB 52, some localities have adopted local zoning regulations or zoning inspector previously said that the smaller solar, we would have covered in regulating that, but it turns out we really, I don't think were. There are new provisions that will allow us to and I will address that later, but I think we should also have a workshop on that. So, but in this memo, the addendum, they do provide a lot of information about how we should address it at the local level. So I encourage the board and the community to look at that. So I think we really need to determine if these are appropriate for the community and if so, how we're going to mitigate any impacts. So the utility scale solar energy facilities are, like I said, large tracts of land, if not thousands of acres, like you said. On these large tracts of solar panels often cover more than half the land area. The solar facility use is often pitched as temporary by developers, but it does tie up the land for 30, 40 years, which is quite a long time. Establishing such a solar facility may take an existing agricultural operation out of production or resuming such operations in the future might be a challenge depending on what's installed and what's below the soil. Utility scale solar can take up valuable future residential and commercial land opportunities and I think that's one of the main concerns that we'll be discussing tonight. And also the industrial growth where land located near cities, towns, and other growth areas are occurring. Like I said, we're in a high growth area, especially with intel coming in. So we've got to really keep that in mind. Solar might be, you know, might be appropriate in one area and not another. So if solar facility is close to a major road or cultural asset, it could affect the view shed attractiveness of the area. A lot of people in our survey for the comprehensive plan wanted a rural character aesthetic maintained in the area. You know, does that fit? Because the size and the scale of the facility can just really change the character of the area. Also, the change in future use. The primary impact of solar facilities is the removal of agricultural land from active use and also from, again, any future use of needed housing or even commercial development or jobs in targeted areas. The USDA, I couldn't find this information, but I do recall seeing a map showing the prime farmland in this area and there's a lot of it. Locating any such facility on prime farmland just doesn't, to me, doesn't seem to make sense and this memo advises that that should be scrutinized. A lot of solar, one of the speakers mentioned that the topsoil was stripped away. Others are leaving vegetation and trying to manage that, but it also can change the characteristics of the land and reclaiming it for farming may be difficult. Also, the decommissioning process typically stipulates removal of anything within 36 inches below the ground surface unless all equipment is specified for complete removal and this is properly enforced during decommissioning, future agricultural operations would be planting crops over anything left in the ground below that depth, including metal poles, concrete, wires, and that such. So that would be a concern with any kind of decommission. But while replacing agricultural uses with residential uses is more typically the land use planning concern, in some areas, this is anticipated and desired over time. People have to live somewhere is what we hear and our consultant, James Leonard, agrees that there's a large push for providing housing to people in this area and it makes sense to be located near highways, exits, cities, and all that, where it's more appropriate maybe for solar out where those amenities aren't there. So this need makes the landline within the designated growth areas or otherwise located near existing population centers the logistical location for future residential use or even commercial. Again, the solar fields would be tying it up for 20 to 40 years. Think back 20, 40 years ago in Etna Township. Gravel roads, I've been told. There's been a lot of changes and we don't know what our future may be, so this, I think, is really about land use. Now, talk about the benefits. One of the positive things about solar is they can be used on brownfields and other previously disturbed land. We don't have that here in Etna. There's some places around Columbus that have that. So again, something that we don't have to take into consideration. But as this says, public officials and comprehensive plan policies should place a premium on industries that create and retain well-paying jobs. That's another factor that the initial construction does provide a lot of jobs, but the ongoing service to that facility is minimal. It's kind of like the data centers in New Albany that I met an individual that said there's only a handful of people that work in those huge data centers. So while the initial construction provides a lot of jobs, there's not ongoing employment from those. So I think that's one of the things that we should take into consideration with our limited amount of land available. Solar facilities can be appropriately located in areas where they're difficult to detect. The prior use of land has been marginal and there is no designated future use specified for the future, not on prime farmland and not near growth areas. And I think that's where we are in these growth areas. Again, touching on the visual impacts that they mentioned here, we're going through a comprehensive plan committee and over and over, people are saying they want to maintain the rural aesthetics. Doesn't mean we want to stay rural and it has to be farms that, but they want that rural aesthetic, which can be developed, I think, if we do smartly and Mr. Leonard's working towards that. The other thing this memo addresses is decommissioning. Once, at the end of the life, 20, 40 years, it's got to be all taken out. And typically, the safest option is cash. That's the most expensive. Developers don't want to do that. But another concern is inflation, future costs. You don't know what it's going to cost in 40 years the way it has now. Look what happened over the pandemic of housing construction, building supplies. I mean, nobody anticipated that. The same thing could happen here and the money you have in that bond or cash won't come close to it. And if that happens, is the township on the hook for it or does it just sit there? So I think that's one of the other concerns. There's a lot of things in this memo that also talk about providing wildlife corridors. So there's benefits for it, but I think one of the questions we need to ask is, is it good for Etna Township, not is it good overall? Because it may be great in one location, but another not. So this isn't saying we shouldn't do solar anywhere as a policy, but we're just talking about Etna Township. Judy talked about the financial incentives. I think that's why we're getting a lot of interest. Two farmers already talked about being approached by solar. So I think this is something that we really have to deal with. Property values. I'll get on that with Jim Leonard's comment. I think he covers that very well. And basically here, they're saying that this really should be addressed in the comprehensive plan of deal with solar, what we want to do. I spoke with Mr. Leonard and he previously has not addressed this, but he is planning to address this at the next comprehensive plan committee. So I would encourage anybody looking into this to read these memos. I did purchase it so we could use this for this purpose. So we have that. And then, like I said, I spoke to Jim Leonard. I don't know if you guys have a copy of this letter. He's with Neighborhood Strategies, working with us on a comprehensive plan. He goes through several reasons and I don't know, has the board reviewed this? I don't know if you want me to go through each one or quickly.
No.
It's in the, it is in the.
But has the board, has the board read it?
Yes, I read mine.
I read it.
Okay. Many times it doesn't happen. But he does have the reasonings of why he doesn't think that, in his opinion, it's a, as he said, in my opinion, from a land use planning perspective, solar farms are best suited for areas that are not experiencing high growth. And he mentions how Etna is that high growth area and all the reasons why. So I think that was very important. He wanted to be here, but he couldn't because he had a prior commitment. Now, on the pro-solar, like I said, I did reach out to Harden. They have three solar fields up here. Here's one of them. They did not respond, but they have 150, on one of them, 150 megawatt facility on a 1,115 acres, over 600,000 solar modules. So these are very, very large sites and if anybody wants to go see it, it's about an hour and something away, so you can take a trip there. And then also, I don't know if she is a resident, but I heard from Catherine Hope Cunningham, who sent an email and then also a link. Her concern was the jobs, that her cousin does the installations, that it provides jobs, which I agree during the initial phase, it does provide construction jobs, but most development does. But again, after it's operational, it's very minimal to maintain. And then she also sent information on agrivoltaics. Now, this is where you combine agricultural and solar. And basically, you build the panels up high and have, their strawberries are good underneath and, again, that's, if we were, if it was good for the area, that would be a benefit to encourage and maybe through development agreements, say, if you do this, we'll be more favorable with any incentives. But I think the real question is, is it a proper use in our township, especially as we're going through our comprehensive plan right now? The commissioners, as Representative Miller stated, they're responsible for doing this outside of the referendum. And a while back, Judy Kefmar, I believe it was you or was Mr. Burkholder, that they said they wanted this brought to them, that from the township. So that's what we're doing here. They did, once I started pushing this and the board agreed to listen to this, they did send a letter stating that they received inquiry and they have the power to deny this and that they do not wish to implement any exclusionary zones. Now, I don't agree with that because I think the best control is local and we need to be proactive, not reactive. And we shouldn't rely on elected officials who can change. There's an election, I think, next year for commission. So I think we should move forward with the decision if we're going to request exclusionary zones or not, regardless of their letter, because that's opposite of what they stated previously. So again, I think we have to control our future and for that reason, I. So again, I think we have to control our future and for that reason, I respect the letter, but I think we have to move forward and present to the commissioners. If they decide not to, then they decide not to. But we need to do what, I think we need to do what's right. So as Judy mentioned, 12 other counties moved forward. I don't think that's a reason to do it or not. You don't just follow group or be the first. But again, I think we should do what's right for us. My concerns and reasons for acting is, as Mr. Leonard indicated, it's not the best or near best use of the limited land within Etina Township. We'll be locking it up for 30, 40 years. Ashley Purcher moved out of its structure. There was a change and someone's moving in. You can't do that with solar easily, especially with decommissioning and use. So I think with their limited land, we should really push other uses other than the solar. Again, it limits land use without easy adaptation. There's a lot of reasons for exclusionary zones, but again, we need to be proactive with this and, you know, determine our own future and not rely on commissioners because the higher up they go, they change their minds, things change, or they just don't want to listen. And this is the closest form of government to the people. So for that, I'm trying to look here. Okay, for that, I think we should move towards exclusionary zone, but I would ask if Ms. McKee, Mr. Johnson, or Ms. Hanson has any other input.
My only question is whether this, you intend that this would be the only session that we have to discuss this with the residents or do you intend to have another one in case there were people that couldn't make it tonight?
No, as stated on here, I have the resolution attached, but I wouldn't expect us to vote on it. Although, you know, I provided some of this material before and, you know, Chrissy Hawthorne just provided a lot more information today, which I wasn't aware of. I would ask that at our next meeting, that we take up the resolution. We have time for residents to contact us. We can have, at that time, the discussion part and public comments, we could get more input. You know, personally, I said, from what I see, I think we should, for all the reasons stated, go for the exclusionary zone. I know Ms. McKee formally stated she was for it. I don't know if that's still so or it's changed, but I think giving everybody an opportunity to speak would be beneficial and, you know, there's no rush to it, but I don't think we should delay it much past the next meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Did you mean that there's going to be another work session or no?
No, I would just have it on the agenda to discuss.
Okay. I just wanted to clear what you, if you're saying there's going to be another session in case people couldn't make it tonight, that was my question.
Well, they could speak next. You don't have to have a work session to have a discussion with the public and that. So, Ms. Hawthorne?
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you been in touch with Dale Arnold with the Ohio Farm Bureau?
No, I have not.
I would be happy to put you in touch with them. He is the state energy director and he lives here in Leakey County, so he's very accessible to us. But he might give you a perspective from the farmer's standpoint and if you've had farmers that have been approached, I hope that you, and if they're interested in it, that you also take their thoughts into consideration of their personal land use.
I have talked to farmers and they've conveyed their, you know, desire, not desire, to do it. And I understand that leasing can sometimes be three times what they would get from a farm operation with, you know, soy or corn and stuff like that. But again, I think one thing, it's difficult with zoning or anything about property rights because everybody says, "Well, it's my property, I can do what I want." But I can't put an eight-foot fence on my property. I can't sell it to Jiffy Lube and make it quicker and change. So through the whole zoning thing, that's what we're trying to determine, what's right for the township, what's best, and not just for the farm. Because a lot of farmers want to sell to distribution centers and put warehouses everywhere and a lot of people said, "No, that's not the best for the community." So I've spoken to them and I would encourage anybody to reach out to the board and provide more input, like Catherine did. I think that's the only one I saw. But yeah, I'm very cognizant of the farmers and very sympathetic too.
Working with the agricultural community, I get to hear both sides of the story.
Right. And I do think that in some places, it is beneficial, you know, but it's, we're right, 70 splits us. We have the exits, we have, the location is great because of the accessibility and all that, which leads to better uses outside of static solar for 30 to 40 years, I believe. So with that, I mean, is it, will the board agree to place this on the agenda, Ms. McKee, on the next meeting for further discussion?
Do you want to continue to move forward and go as far as we can to get things going on this solar?
Will this be on the next agenda?
We would like to present it on the next agenda.
Mr. Arnold, can I ask a question? Do you not intend to talk to the guy with the Farm Bureau that she was offering to put you in touch with?
No, I do, but we have two weeks until then.
Oh, you do? Okay, I just wasn't clear, but it sounded like you didn't want to talk to him, that's why I was asking.
Oh, no. The video she sent me shortly before the meeting, I watched.
Oh, great.
I do my due diligence.
No, I know, that's why I was confused, it sounded like you didn't want to talk to him, I just cleared.
No, but we have two weeks and that's what I plan. If anybody else wants to submit anything, talk to me. You got my phone number?
Perfect, thank you so much.
I had a question for you there. So a lot of these zoning codes, you're allowed to do certain things on certain properties and there's NCIS codes that basically tell you what you can do, what you have to have, that it used to do and so forth. Were any of those codes, were you able to use something like that with your zoning or why did that not work around because the farm land is more than five acres and if it's ag, you can do whatever? Is that what?
I wish that we could have. Yeah, there's Ohio law that excludes industrial solar from having to obey local zoning.
And that was rooted for less than 50?
If it's under 49 megawatts or below, zoning does control it.
Yeah, but just if it's over 50, okay.
Yeah.
And that was the last thing I had on there, that I do believe we should have a workshop on the less than 50-megawatt provisions to determine, you know, how we want to move forward on that. Because again, Mr. Singleton originally said that our zoning covered, had protections on that, and then I saw, he said, "We do not." So.
Yeah, that, it might be something where those codes is not, and there's something we need to add it because not all the codes are in there. And new things are popping.
Well, that's a big change inside.
Can I say one more?
Yes.
Sorry. A lot of the townships don't have any zoning for solar or wind or obviously it's in your technology. And the community solar developers are very well aware of that and probably your farmers have had their phones ringing out to try to get little smaller mini projects put together, they'll go right up to 49 megawatts. So and they'll try to get that stuffed into like three little projects, you know, to get three little pieces of land, yeah. It's a mini industrial project.
I saw there was a picture of one of those on, it had like seven or eight different places on it all tied together.
Yeah.
These pictures, I think that's what it was.
Just to put in perspective, there's a place in Indiana that it's 50 megawatt, so you could make it just a little bit smaller on 300 acres. So that's, you know, large area. So that's all I have, unless there's other questions or questions from the audience on any of that?
Yes, I have a question. So a solar company approaches a farmer and he wants to sell it. So you're saying he cannot unless he approaches or gets it approved by?
Well, anybody can sell any land for anything. It's the same as any development around here. We had a developer, a farmer that wanted to sell on 310 and Palmer and the developer wanted to build two warehouses there. Now, the farmer can sell it, there's no restriction selling it, but what happens is the developers makes it contingent on the rezoning. They're not going to buy it if it's not rezoned or allowed to be used for that. So no one's preventing anybody from selling anything. It's just what the use is.
Just put it in perspective, if you say no, the farmer can't sell. That's just what she just asked and you're trying to, well, he can sell.
No, the developer, the developer can't develop anything they want.
How come they're not building warehouses if they wanted to?
It's not zoned for that.
And why?
Because it's, we have zoning, I mean, we could go to a whole basic concept of zoning. Just like I said, I can't put an eight-foot fence on my property. It's that regulated. So are we going to get rid of all zoning?
Can they block with your property?
What? Eight-foot fence?
Did they tell you when you put your invisible fence up, you didn't have to put six-by-six posts?
What does that have to do with any of this?
You put six-by-six posts on your property and you got an invisible fence.
It's not invisible. I'm glad you're going by my property.
So you can sell your property, but it's contingent on the zoning. It's zoned for agricultural, for things, it's agricultural until you get a rezone. Is that correct?
Correct. You can't, that's why we have rezoning. It's, you're kept into what you can do based on the zoning. If you want to change that, you can change it.
Who does that zoning thing?
At the township, the township does.
Zoning committee.
And that's what we're going through right now, the comprehensive plan of where things are appropriate, of what kind of housing, what kind of, because originally, we had an industrial park, at the Parkway to Mink and that, and that's where they started putting warehouses everywhere. That wasn't part of that plan. So it's very complicated, but a lot of people say this farmer can't sell. No, they can sell, but they might not get the most money out of it because developers are willing to pay a lot of money to get in a warehouse to get in this. But like I said, I can't sell my house to 7-Eleven and open a convenience store there. It's not zoned, it's not, it would never work, but no one's stopping me from doing it. It's just, it's part of the process, part of.
How do you get on the zoning board?
It should be an open process, but they're disappointed.
Every year, every year, there's five people on the board. Every year, there's a person who needs a five-year term. So one has up for renewal if they want to apply for it, we can put somebody in that place every year. If somebody resigns or leaves the board early before their term's up, then we can appoint somebody else to that position also.
We recently had, you know, an announcement, a list, and had people to express their interest in serving. And so when there is a vacancy on the board, that would be my expectation, is that we would notify the community. If you're interested in serving, let us know.
Is there anything else? I got a question for you, since you've been through it, I'm sure you've looked at all things. Is there any other thing that's exclusionary except for solar and wind? Because we haven't talked about wind, but I see winds on all other stuff, that a farmer can do, it's not regulated, the township can't zone during agriculture or whenever it's open. Are those the only two things that are exempt?
I mean, I imagine that a township can try to exclude whatever. I don't really know for sure. I know agricultural zoning gets a lot of leeway in the Ohio revise code.
Right.
There's a lot we can't tell them they can't do.
That's why I wondered what else there was besides, I mean, because we're not just talking, I mean, if those are the only two things there are, solar and wind, that they can do, no matter what, is there anything else?
Well, I think there's not a need because, there's not a need because the need for the exclusionary zones is because it comes from up-down, that it's at the state level and then now they're putting commissioners, that it wasn't, we had no say over it. So now they're giving us say. Everything else, we have says, that's those use codes. When you say, "We're not having residential hotels," and taking it out, that's excluded.
I'm looking for there's anything else.
I haven't seen any, I have not seen recommendations to exclude anything else other than some industrial where they want to have a zone or that's our industrial zone or, you know, our commercial zone is over here. The exclusionary zones, I'm hearing talked about, just about solar and wind.
So somewhere along the line, the house passed the bill, excluded backwind sometime. So you're saying they're already excluding?
No, they gave the state authority over, that's the siting board. So they had the authority, we didn't have the authority to say yes or no. It trumps the townships and that. Our authority on everything else is the use codes.
Just real quick, when you're asking about the exclusion of solar and wind only, that's the only thing that Senate Bill 52 addresses.
Right.
So as far as the exclusionary part of the bill, it's only solar and wind. The zoning itself, you have the ability to do those changes and using Bowling Green Township, as we just made on the last commission meeting, they made changes to their zoning.
Yeah, I just always thought that if we had a zoning book, we'd zone it, we could control it. And I find out, there's two things we can't really control through zoning.
Solar and wind.
Yeah, that's the only thing that really is.
Or oil, gas. There are other things that you do not have the authority over. That they manage at state level because, like I said, this, there's three of those books is the application that the power siting board has experts to go through to manage the projects. So that's why they have that at the state level.
Yes, sir.
I just have a suggestion that the board make, if they're ever going to make an exclusion zone, do it soon before somebody's applying for this property and then they sue you because you just did it to them.
Yeah. Like I said, I think this is more about just local control and the under 50 megawatts, we will have authority on. They gave that to us when we didn't have that. So, but with exclusionary zones, we'll also have that ability to request for that too. So I just think there's better uses for the future.
And I think as I said in the process, the township, if the board determines that this is the direction that should be taken for the township, then we make a request to the commissioners, but the commissioners still control whether or not there will be an exclusionary zone short of taking it to a referendum and putting it on.
Correct. And when it goes to the commissioners, the commissioners can take it up and it's not, the commissioners will just say yes or no. There'll be public hearings, there'll be, that's not the end of the process, so everybody will have another chance. This is basically us saying, "We want these exclusionary zones, please take it up."
Is it the whole township's exclusionary zone or sort of whole, do you like to buy it up?
You can make a map of whatever you want, but according to Jim Leonard, nowhere in the township should be solar. There's better uses, there's better, so it would just be the whole township.
So we could draw a map of the township and say, "What, this part excluded and this part not?" That's a possibility.
Yeah. If you thought there was, if we thought there was a place that was suitable for it, you could say everything but that. So that's all I have. I look forward to discussing this more next meeting.
So we, yeah, we'll move on over to public comments. If you would stand up to the podium and state your first, last name and your address, please, for the record.
John Kinnar, 10785 Palmer Road. I would just like to describe my wife's farm. To the north of us, we have Cole's Warehouse. To the east of us, we got Farmers. To our south, we got Farmers. To our west, we have Farmers. We don't have no houses. I can go out in my backyard and I can see one farmer and we can't even wave at each other. But that's, you know, Etina Township. Mark sets up here and says, "I can sell my land anytime I want." Well, that's right. I can sell it to a farmer for $6,000, $7,000 or I can sell it to a developer for $100,000. What would you like to do? Would you like the mower or the hire? If you worked your entire life to retire and somebody in here says, "No." We got one resident, and nothing against her, one resident and one trustee has brought this whole thing up tonight, solar, solar. They have voted down for this young lady right back here, who asked Mark about selling his, sell land. They have voted down a Super Walmart here in this township. They have voted down warehouses in this township. They have voted a house. They have voted a housing development down in this township. Now they're against solar. So where does the farmer go? If you don't want to farm, if you have nobody that can farm, they don't care. You're going to stay farming. So I think all three trustees need to put their head together and the zoning and say, no more Etna. You guys cannot sell your house. You cannot sell your house. I don't care if your work has transferred you out of, out of here. You can't sell your house because I want you to have the same feeling the farmer has. We cannot, and you're not going to do it. That's just the gist of it. I mean, for, for everybody to sit here and say, oh, you can sell your land. No, we can't. It's controlled by people that live in housing developments. They live on a quarter acre or, you know, whatever a housing development lot is. They are controlling the farmers. And that's my biggest complaint. I'm dot four solars, I'm not against solar, I'm dot against warehousing. You know, Etna is growing, it's development. Like Mark says, twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, we've got sixty years. So we've seen a lot. And we're not against it. I mean, you know what? If you don't like it here anymore, move on. There's a lot of country east of here. I mean, a lot of countries, there's a lot of countries north of us here. So if you like country, you know, buy a little more land and don't have a neighbor like Mark. I think that's all I had. I was thinking I'd run out of my business, my, but you know, when, when you make a contract with a solar farm, they have got what you call bonding. If you've ever had any commercial dealings with buildings and stuff, they have a bonding agent, which is an insurance company, and they will bond them. Where they go bankrupt or not, they must return the property to its original condition and the insurance or the bonding agent will pay for it, whether you went bankrupt or not. I worked at Mount Carmel, we had a plumbing contractor went bankrupt. Left us holding a bag, we could not proceed. We had, but the bonding agent came in, took over, paid for all this, and you know, it was taken care of.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Teresa Ogaishak, four eight-four, Terrell West. First want to discuss something from the last meeting when Sabrina Warner spoke. She said she was elected official. She did not add elected official of the Republican Party. She's on the State Central Committee. Why didn't she identify herself? Was she ashamed of her position? Um, she puts criticism on Granville. Why? Because there's Democrats there? She didn't even know who the newbies were because she called Jeff a newbie. He's been in the township over, involved over twenty-five years. So that was my comment from last week. For this week, um, Jeff, you're talking about doing those streets in the, end up proper next year. Are you applying for the grants this year to get them, so that they will be hopefully paid for? As far as solar, I don't have solar in my parents' backyard, but they put construction there. And they're building apartments and condos and, and all that. When I went to sell the house, it was, it was valued at, at house and property, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Because of the construction behind and those beautiful old wood forests that have been there for over forty years, over fifty years, because we've been there fifty years, are now gone, we had to accept a price of fifty thousand dollars less. It devalued that property by that much just because of construction. We had two people back out because of the construction. So we had to sell it at two hundred and thirty rather than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So that would be another consideration for solar and what it's going to do to property values in this area. Thank you.
Judy Caffmeyer, twenty-nine room accord southwest. Mr. Kennard, I have no dog in this fight. And so it's like, I'm concerned about Etna Township and what's best for this community and what's best for Etna Township. I agree with Mr. Leonard, you know, that there are better uses for our properties. And as I recall, and I don't think, you know, I'm glad that many years ago that Etna Township denied Ronkey the opportunity to build a dump on Main Street. So zoning provisions are advantageous to us. You know, not everything is all glitter and gold. So I have been a proponent of what's best for Etna Township. I have no invested interest in this. I don't have any money included in anything. And so it's a personal interest and it's a personal passion. Thank you.
Judy Haddocks, forty-six Imperial Drive Southwest. I want to say just one thing. We got off the freeway up here at Etna, the Tascal exit, between Etna, the exit, and our house, right off of Main Street. There was seventeen of eighteen warehouses. I think we've given enough land to the warehouses, to be real honestly. Ashley is right across the street, Amazon's right across the street. And another thing, I called the Leighton County Engineer. They put me off to, I think his name was Troy of the roads. He told me that road, Main Street, between Imperial and Refuge would be open today. We left at five fifteen, or six fifteen, five fifteen to come up here. It is not open. I don't know what they're waiting on because there's cars up and down all the time. There's a house on, uh, Rec, Main Street, Harsha's house. I don't even know if she can get in and out of her home. Maybe they're waiting on me to cut the ribbon and open the door. I don't know. But I had been told, Luke called me and told me, they said it was going to be done in the end of May. It wasn't. Then they said it was going to be done, done the second of June. It wasn't. They told me it was supposed to be done today. Unless they open that up tomorrow, I won't be on the phone again. I want to know what the holdup is. And then they're going to go around about a refugee and close it down again. Why didn't they do it all at once? Somebody needs to do something with this roads. And I know it's a county road, it's not a net township road because that township does take care of our roads and rural acres. But something needs to be done about this Main Street that's gone on for two and a half months. And then he told me that they were going to work on it Saturday, and they were going to finish it up on Monday and Tuesday, and it would be open on Tuesday. They did not work on Saturday. I was home all night and they did not work on Saturday. So I don't, I don't want the problem to exist, but it needs to be, it needs to be resolved and get that road open. It's very, very inconvenient to everybody. And sometimes the fire trucks come down. But I sit at night, I see the road from my van, and there's cars coming down, up and down all the time. But they still have got the, the things up, so.
Well, I'll check with, uh, Joder, with that, get you an update tomorrow.
Uh, I'm going to call.
Are you going to call?
I'm calling him tomorrow.
All right.
I mean, we're on a first-name basis. Thank you.
You broke it.
I got it.
You got it?
I got it. Ryan Davis, eighty-eight oh seven Watkins Road. I was just sitting there thinking, it's been years ago since this happened, but I just want to tell kind of a story that relates to the discussion back and forth about property or other rights. So when I was in high school and didn't care about any of this stuff, because I was in high school and you don't care about government stuff when you're that age typically. A kid that was on the football team the year had his dad own his property. Well, he was a farmer, or actually not farmer, though, actually a number-one farm product in the state is actually trees, by the way. He was, he was in lumber. Cell towers, when they started going up in our neighborhood. Came to, came to the neighbor of his house, asked, put a cell tower in your backyard. I mean, we're talking like maybe one side of this property, the other, put a cell tower in your yard. I think it's ugly, I don't want that there. He went next door to the gentleman who owned the lumberyard, said, could we put a cell tower in your yard? Absolutely. He put it right on the corner of the property, it butt up to that gentleman. He then heated off that piece of property, sold his house, moved to the country, and that person has sat there and looked at it. The township did not protect it. You cannot own a piece of property, example, being a farm, and expect it to be anything other than a farm. The value of Etna is the location, the schools, the community, what we built here over the years. Is it perfect? No. Do we want to make it better in the future? Yes. So it needs to be a cumulative decision by the community. And the comprehensive plan was a good gauge of what the community wants. The members that sit on the board just took the feedback from the survey of what the community wants this, wants Etna to be for the future. It's, it needs to be an overview. Do I feel bad that the farmers can't cash in on what may be a huge payday if a developer waves a bunch of money in their hands? Absolutely. You know, I want to be Jed Clampett, dig in my backyard, hit some oil and, and move to Beverly Hills, but that's not a guarantee. So the reason the value is there and the reason this community is what it is, is the groundwork that has been laid, the protection is laid in the future. So I'd like to protect the value of what it is today, not at the expense of anyone, but at the expense of the community. Because that's what we need to look at every decision that's made. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to come up and speak in, under public comments?
Hi there.
Hi there. This is my first time to your meeting, but I would be remiss if I left this meeting without sharing. My wife told me to tell you guys. My name is Richard Jarrett. I live at twenty-one Setch Court.
Yes.
Cumberland Trails. And the issue for us is the service I've received from the internet provider. Only provider we have in the community is Spectrum.
Yes.
And they're failing miserably. My entire neigh, my neighborhood has been experiencing outage. No explanation what's going on with the outage. Uh, we've called, we've gone in all, all day without having access to the internet. We work from home. Uh, we ask, okay, so when, when are you going to put in high-speed fiber service in Etna? We don't know. It's, it's a older neighborhood, therefore we're deferred doing that. We do that mostly with new neighborhoods, not existing neighborhoods. So the question occurred to me, well, we have FedEx. We have all these new companies coming into Etna. Are they using websites like we are using? Are we getting, I mean, I'm just asking the question because as neighbors, the value, access to internet is, is a norm. And I, I haven't got my neighbors rattled up yet, but I know they're experiencing, they're sharing similar concerns about the service we're receiving from Spectrum. Are they limited, are they the only ones providing services in, in, in Etna? I don't know. You know, because they seem to have a corner on the, on market and that needs to be addressed because we can't continue, more people work at the home, accessing technology is important to our growth. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Steve Sly, thirteen seventy-two, Londondale Parkway, Newark. Also own a business that pays taxes into the county and the state of Ohio, which the township received two million dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. So I believe that also titles me right to speak. Somebody who served on the school board out here, was a resident in this township for a number of years. Also worked in the zoning department in this township back in the early two thousands. I have a number of residents reaching out to me, asking me to come and speak on their behalf tonight and at other meetings. Uh, as a person who has a Facebook publication of over one thousand members, they are periodically sending me questions, you know, wanting to be asked at these meetings. The first one goes to public records requests. There's a number of people that have reached out saying the public records requests are being made, but they're not being fulfilled. While I don't know the specifics about the individuals that are making the request, I can say firsthand, I have experienced this situation and it's gone to the extent of being told that the record does not exist when in fact it does exist and the copy was shown to me. The other question that is being asked and has been brought up previously at these meetings is the security system that is, has been taken out of the inside the building, but yet no new system has been activated, which is leaving, uh, uh, business inside the building to basically go on with absolutely no, uh, no security system in place to, uh, to detect if there were any issues. There was actually a situation where a, uh, an elected official in this board was, was accused of things, and it was easily to be done because there was no security system in place to refute the baseless claims that were made against that individual. I will say to the people who do not feel I should be here today or at any other meeting speaking, those same people, including the board president, had no problem with me at these, at this podium uh, in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, speaking out against Mr. Evans. I think it is ironic that the people on Facebook and the people in this meeting uh, that are against Mr. Evans all of a sudden have a problem with me coming in and speaking out against, uh, uh, some of the people that are here now when they had no problem with me doing that in two thousand and twenty-two. I can honestly say, after the short conversations I've had with Mr. Evans over the last, well, six, seven months now, um, I, I definitely spoke out of turn during two thousand and twenty-two about him and about his leadership on the board. It is clear that he is the only trustee that, at this table, that has the, uh, the best interest of the residents at heart. The solar panel discussion, we need to be having tonight if it wasn't for the leadership of Mr. Evans on the board. Things talking about the movie at the park. I believe that was Mr. Evans who brought that suggestion up to begin with, but others want to take credit for that tonight. And then we talk about the road paving. Again, Mr. Evans was the one who in two thousand and twenty-two put the plan together, got the people involved to give the assessments of the roads in that township and what needed to be done. And apparently those are being ignored now and instead bringing in outside forces into the township to give their suggestions and ideas on what road should be paved.
Thank you, Mr. Sly.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
Did you say use for Newark? Okay, I'll go back and play the recording.
Uh, we'll move on over to trustee, oh, sir. Yes, sir, please.
My name's John Lake. I live at seventy-one Beachwood Drive Southwest. What I noticed here tonight was disgraceful. The board needs to be more cohesive and not against each other. You need to work together. This is not good and everybody knows what's going on here. It's very disappointing to come here and see people excluded that are on the board. Two people are making decisions without considering a third. You wrote his tow coattails to get on board.
That's not true.
Yes, it is, it's very true.
Go look at your numbers, that's not true.
I know what the numbers were and I know why they were.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on over to trustee comments, please. Can you comment?
Comments?
Well, usually good, Mr. Johnson.
You said it didn't happen, do you have any?
Uh, yes, I do. First, I'd like to discuss this Etna in Focus newsletter that was sent out without board permission. I think it's highly improper that one trustee, Ms. McKee, is creating a newsletter for the township without any input from the board, without any input, input from the fiscal officer, and uses it to commend her one-year anniversary as tenure as president and not address any of the real issues. It has the accomplishments of purchasing cruisers, but that was only after numerous delays and the sheriff stating, we really need to get these purchased and they were delayed further. So I think it's inappropriate that one board member is sending out newsletters on behalf of the township, and it was previously indicated that it was going to be mailed out. I'm not sure how, and again, nothing's discussed, everything's just done behind the scenes. Uh, this, this is a board, not a, a CEO or one person. Did bring up the Parks Committee, again, same thing there. The Board of Trustees is forming a park committee. There was no discussion or vote. That needs to end. And then another thing, I was, I was called today, there's a property with garbage bags.
bags about 20 foot wide, six foot tall. Now she indicated that she contacted Ms. McKee and Mr. Johnson and were ignored. We need to enforce zoning. Why? I got another call from a woman and I forwarded the email or the voice message to her administrator that was ignored by Mr. Singleton before. We need enforcement on these. These are affecting our neighborhoods. These are affecting people's property. It's unsanitary. 20 foot by six foot pile of garbage.
What is the answer?
I will provide that too, but her point was she contacted Ms. McKee and Mr. Johnson and they ignored her.
That's not true.
We need, we need to be responsive to residents, period. We work for you and everybody else in this township. And again, the communication of the staff in the office, I'm not told anything. I'm kept from everything, so I don't hear about these things until people call. So I would encourage all residents, my number is 614-831-1600. I'll pick up, I'll answer and I'll do what I can. But again, the zoning office ignores me, doesn't even respond to me. There's no enforcement and no cooperation. That needs to end. But again, the, the actions outside of the board need to stop. The discussions, breaking the Open Meetings Act needs to stop. We need to do what's right, follow the law for our residents. It's our duty. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Evans, who's the lady that reached out to me and Mr. Johnson? It's interesting that she reached out to us but not you. Who, what's her name? What's the resident's name?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, it is publicly. It is publicly. Anything that comes through is publicly. Yes, it is. That's not true. Yes, it's public. Yes, it is, Mrs. If she sent us an email, reached out.
I'll provide it. She has to.
Okay.
But, but the.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. She's going to get, if she has an issue in the township and she needs it to be addressed, we can address it. Okay? She's a resident of court, according to him. Okay? And if we want to reach out to her and we say her name publicly, it's not a problem.
Well, both of you have her number because she.
What's interesting is she didn't reach, did she reach out to you, Mr. Evans?
After she got no response.
Okay, okay.
President and vice president, she went off the list.
Okay, sure.
Just like the other residents and their administrator that said.
Mr. Evans, you continue to pretend as if things are, are fault and you're doing everything correctly. The residents don't have any idea of the kind of emails that you have sent to myself, Ms. Hanson, on an intimidating harassing and Mrs. Brown as well as Mr. Johnson on a regular basis. Intimidating, harassing us. So you want to be the victim up here. You're not being honest, Mark. And I just wish you would be. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have one question and that pertains to all three of you and those two ladies. The vicarage should stop. You're not here for you and each other. You're here for us. And I think that you all owe each other an apology. And I don't care what emails are sent or not sent. You're not here for that. You are here to serve us. And by our next election, you will know. You will know.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn. It's now.
We're called. Mark Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McKee?
Yes.